Okay, there he is. All right, the attorney is online. Our city planner is present, our city engineer is present, along with council member Dunlap, Gady, Tanner, and Lon, and our city administrator. At this time, I'll ask you all to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business this evening is the open forum. This is the portion of the meeting where you can come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit comments to five minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak at this time?
Dave Davis, six, six, eight, nine, Packard Avenue, Northeast, Elk River. Okay, I've got quite a few things for you guys. I was at the Albertville meeting last week, and they discussed our compo site that we share with, recycling site with Albertville. Apparently, there's a lot of problems of contractors showing up and dumping logs, play, and other debris from their businesses, because the sites got really no control on it, other than their side. It costs, they said it costs ninety thousand dollars twice a year to have somebody come in, shred up all the wood, and haul it away. So far, from what I understand, some private company has gone in there, done that, and taken all the chips, for whatever reason. So they're looking at new ways to control access to our site. It also includes residences who own businesses and landscaping, tree removal, also using the site as their business dumping grounds. I've been there a few times. It's appalling how much crap shows up. You can hardly turn around in it on some weekdays. So they're gonna probably talk into you guys for a solution, how to control that. Imagine like other sites like Elk River, they have an access card that they charge citizens money for, and that's the only way they can get in and out of their compo site in Elk River. So, so just so you know about that. They also were very, the council was very worried about the residents closer to their fire station. If there's a fire, and we don't have a contract with Albertville, they get to sit there and watch the fire and wait for Otsigo Fire Department to show up. Also gonna be talking about who's responsible for ninety-four accidents eastbound or westbound, who takes care of which side. So there's a lot of other things considered with this fire department. The fire chief happens to be the president of the Minnesota Fire Chiefs Association. Why we didn't hire him to do our fire station as a consultant, I have no idea. We would've been better off in the long run paying him and wouldn't be out a million dollars, and a fire chief who disappears after five years. As our chief indicated recently, once our station's up, he's out of here. Nice way to make a million bucks and not be answerable or accountable for anything. This time, I also want to congratulate the Otsigo City Council, both current and from the previous administration. You wonder why? Well, very simple, you guys are gonna be famous. Can you guess why? The high school, the school district in Buffalo is developing a course for all their students on government, featuring the building of establishing of the Otsigo Fire Department. They've got videos of all the meetings. They capture every eye roll, every laugh, every disrespectful thing that city council members do when people are talking, over talking the public. It's gonna be quite educational. They talk, they're gonna use it for citizen, about citizen participation in the process. Your favorite topic. Social media, I wonder what good that might include. They also are gonna be having discussions, they're developing this course. They're gonna be talking about watching the mayor lose control of the meetings and not being able to maintain order. They're gonna be watching about, talking about the mayor not being able to know when to use out when you're out of order, as was evidenced when a former council member was attacking Ryan's mental health. It automatically would have required the presiding person of the meeting to call that person out of order and stop it. Evidently, that was not the decision that was made. The students are gonna vote, they do all the videos of past council meetings, and anything related to the fire station, the pros and the cons, democracy in action, the use of the EDA, the use of the CIP. And so it'll be a very wonderful democracy in action report for the students, and an extremely important class for them to have. I wish my civics class had something like this, but you guys will be famous. I also want to congratulate you guys for the meeting that you had last week. I personally view it as a disaster. We have, concerned citizens have posted videos that you guys decided not to record. There were several. The meeting was recorded in its entirety, live, streamed, and then the best clips of the video were presented individually. Those videos have been viewed by over twenty-five thousand views. I don't think any Otsigo City Council meeting has ever come anywhere near those numbers. Other people from throughout the area have got phone calls, emails from Buffalo, Hamel, you name it, Orano, all those things, commenting on what they saw and how appalled they were in love with it. At the meeting that the chief that the city council in Albertville had last week, there were many questions. Why is it at that meeting we found out that we're gonna be spending one point six million on staffing for the fire department? We pay one point three million for the coverage from all the different departments. That one point six million is twice what any fire department in this area pays their firemen. What is this chief doing with our money? And how can this continue? And why are our firemen gonna be sitting at a station and not be the first responders, but wait for volunteer people to show up? I think that's a pretty fair question. No other city that I know of has eighty thousand set aside as an incentive to hire fire people. Their chief also said every fire department in the state is having problems getting firemen and retaining them. Albertville alone is losing three firemen this year. Two of them are moving, and I don't know what the reason is for the third one. But they're also scrambling to try to get paying twice as much, who are we gonna be poaching to get to join our fire department? It's like maybe it might be a good idea, but I don't think it's gonna work. The other thing is that I'd like to know is last, at that meeting, Jessica was, the mayor was directly asked why she chose to use the EDA. She didn't get an answer. We got the runaround, oh, we chose the EDA when the council chose an EDA. We know what the council did. Why can't you answer the question? Why did you use the EDA? It's a very simple question. I think the reason is because we already know the answer. It prevents the citizens from voting against a fire department. If you look at history, I love history, so I read a lot on history. It's in Stalingrad. The Germans had the greatest army in the world, took over Europe, got to Stalingrad, and they told their people, yeah, they're gonna win. They didn't win. They lost. But I would like a direct answer, why did the mayor decide and the council to use an EDA rather than a CIP bond and let the referendum happen and have the voters decide yes or no on this massive expensive bill? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments?
Vincent Peterson, one, four, oh, six, four, sixty-seven, Circle. I would just like to say that I believe that we currently have the best fire services that money can buy. I do not believe building a twenty million dollar or sixteen million dollar, okay, building, it's gonna improve on what we have for fire services in several ways, because twenty or sixteen million dollars of debt is not gonna help the city. Having our full-time staff that is gonna increase the cost of having fire services in Otsigo. People are not willing to pay for the, having a new shiny fire department with full-time staff when we don't need it, when we have, you know, great fire services, the way that it is, the way that it's been for decades. Okay, and I would like to appeal to the city council that I talked to a lot of people. And I know that there is a lot of people out there that have a great job and make a lot of money and have no problem paying additional property taxes, whatever that winds up to be for this new fire department. But I also know that there's a lot of people that are retired, that their husbands have passed away, or their spouses passed away. They're a single person on social security. They love their home, they've lived here all their lives. They're gonna have to figure out how to move, because they're not gonna be able to increase their income. They're on a fixed income, social security, you know, a cost of limit increase is not gonna help them pay their property tax increases. When you're talking about thousands of dollars. If you, if you start talking about the county increasing taxes by double digits, you talk about the, the school system, gonna need a new high school here, and then you talk about the city, you know, you know, doing some kind of huge increase on property taxes. Those all add up to thousands of dollars on people's property taxes, and they're not gonna be able to afford it. And so have you thought about those thousands of people? I understand that there's, there is thousands of people, maybe they can afford, you know, they have a four hundred thousand dollar house. Maybe they'll have a hundred thousand dollar a year job. But what about these people that are on social security? That are on a low-income job? Making, they're waitress or something, making ten dollars an hour. What about them people? Like, they're, this is gonna impact people in a huge way, and I just want to make sure that you're considering, you know, everyone in the community. What, what you talk about the people that have got enough money to pay property tax increase? That's great, I'm happy for them. What about the people that can't? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. We will close the open forum and move on to consider agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or delete at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Corey?
I will make a motion to approve the, our, the agenda as written.
Second. Motion by Corey, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. What's with the feedback that we're getting?
Yeah, I think it's the light cover again, it sounds like this.
Okay. Just a weird rattle.
Shake rattling over.
All right. Moving on to item three, our consent agenda. A motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Corey?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Corey, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item four point one, Tanglewood Second Edition. I'll turn this over to the planner.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Tammerack Development here this evening with their second addition to their Tanglewood Development, which is located west of Mackayver Avenue, north of Seventieth Street, County Road thirty-eight. The application involves consideration of a vacation of existing right-of-way in utility easements that are within the plat. Those need to be vacated so that the property can be cleared for subdividing into single-family lots. This is related to the preliminary plat that was approved March twenty-fifth in twenty twenty-four that included one hundred and eighty-five single-family lots. The second phase of the development includes fifty-eight single-family lots. There's also one outlot that would be reserved for a future third phase of development. When there's a final plat approved by the city, the developer enters into a contract with the city to provide for completion of the public improvements in a timely manner, consistent with the city's requirements. So the property is, again, located west of Mackayver Avenue, north of County Road thirty-eight. It's guided by the Comprehensive Plan for Low-Density Residential Development. When the preliminary plat was approved, the property was rezoned to R five, single and two-family district, making single-family lots a permitted use within the property. Concurrent with that approval was also a conditional use permit that allowed the developer flexibility on lot area requirements, consistent with the policies of the twenty twenty-three Comprehensive Plan. This is really an infill development that is surrounded by the Sunray Farms and Dura Creek developments to the west, Arbor Creek to the north, and Martin Farms to the east. All of those properties developed in the early two thousands. This one didn't, and that's the reason for the vacation. The trunk water main that serves most of the West Sewer District goes straight through this field. And it's just now that this property is being developed, so that's the, the reason for the vacation request. This is the water main shown on the right side of the street, where the city's raw trunk water main runs through the property. The line's not being moved within the plat, but for at one end, to slightly adjust it with the alignment of the plat. The plat will provide for dedication of new easements over this existing corridor, so there's no change substantially to the easement or the line that's in place, it's only a procedural matter. This section of Lannan Avenue is a remnant of the former Meyer addition. You recall there was one single-family home at the end of this street that was originally owned by the underlying landowner's daughter and her husband. The entire property was sold, the Meyer addition was vacated with the preliminary plat. But because the son and daughter and son, excuse me, the daughter and son kept their home, it was necessary to maintain this section of Lannan Avenue until this second edition plat, when that house will be removed and new lots created. So this is something that would have typically been done with the first preliminary plat, but for keeping that house up until this phase of development. The final plat again consists of fifty-eight single-family lots to the north of the first phase of development. Includes dedication of right-of-way and construction of public streets. All of these are local streets, so they're the twenty-eight-foot-wide street section with a sidewalk on one side. All the connection points to the second addition either come through Tanglewood to the south or to existing connections to the west to Sunray Farms as part of the plats that were developed previously. As I said, the lot requirements are those of the R five zoning district, which is sixty feet minimum, nine thousand square feet in area. The preliminary plat included a conditional use permit allowing flexibility, the smallest lot being seventy-five hundred square feet within this. But they're well over the mean and median requirement, looking at it that way. Setbacks are all standard for the R five district. There is an issue with the R five district where change in the setback wasn't recognized as part of the lot width requirement for corner lots. So with that PUD, CUP, with the preliminary plat, the corner lots were allowed to reduce by twelve feet down to seventy-eight feet in width, so that you're basically maintaining the same building pad for each lot, but you have the corner lot setback recognized on the side lot abutting the street. The properties will all be connected to public sewer and water utilities that are being extended throughout the second edition. The city engineers reviewed those plans and approved of them. Stormwater management has also been reviewed by the city engineer and found to be consistent with the overall preliminary plat, stormwater management plan, and controlling the water within this phase of development in accordance with the subdivision ordinance on city code. Easements will be dedicated at the perimeter of each of these single-family lots and for any surface drainage ways within the lots, including any rear stormwater areas covered by a utility pipe. The city isn't requiring land be dedicated for parks. Within this area of the final plat, there is some land that would be dedicated in the third phase to provide a connection between this neighborhood and Arwood Creek to the north. That connection point provides then trail access to get you to Bodry Meadows Park. So this is within that service area. In lieu of the land dedication for this phase of development, the developer will pay a cash fee in accordance with the fee schedule. And again, the city attorneys drafted the development contract, which is included in your packet. Developer would execute that at the time the final plat is signed and provide all the required fees, securities, and escrow amounts. City staffers recommending approval of the final plat. The land use is consistent with recommendations of the Comprehensive Plan. The need for the council to actually discuss this is the public hearing requirement for the vacation. Otherwise, this would have been a final plat. Or, excuse me, it would have been a consent agenda item, but the need to hold the public hearing requires obviously discussion. But the existing right-of-way and easement will no longer serve a public purpose with the approval of this final plat, so the vacation is appropriate. The plat itself complies with the requirements of the subdivision ordinance and zoning ordinance. So we've included in your packet Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty, vacating the existing right-of-way and utility easements. Findings affect and decision to approve the final plat, which is subject to fourteen conditions. And then, approval of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one approving the development contract.
Thank you. Does the developer wish to comment?
Brendan Sullivan, seven, one, three, Vista Boulevard, number three oh three, Waconia, Minnesota. I'm here on behalf of Tammerack Land Development for the second edition of the Tanglewood Development. Earlier last year, the council approved the preliminary plat for one hundred and eighty single-family homes consisting of two builders, Lenar and David Weekly Homes. We proceeded with the final plat in the fall and, and construction. And of first edition in the fall, and are now preparing for the next phase of development with the second edition. I appreciate your consideration and would like to thank you, the city council, and also city planner Dan Lipt and city engineer Ron Wagner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could make one additional comment. You'll recall when the preliminary plat first came through, there were neighbors in Martin Farms that were concerned about tree removals on the north or in the east side of that. This phase of development does touch that, those lots. And city engineer Wagner and Mr. Sullivan did meet with the property owners again on-site to review which trees would be removed and which could stay. So we did follow up on that item held over from the initial preliminary plat, the initial final plat.
Thank you. All right. We will open the public hearing. Please come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit comments to five minutes or less. Does anyone have any comments regarding the Tanglewood Second Edition? Ask again for any public comments. Another third time for public comments. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back up to council for questions for staff, the developer, developer or for motion. Counsel, questions, comments? Corey?
Madam Mayor, Dan, I just had one question, I think. Is this the Saint Michael, Albertville School District over there? I should have looked this up, but.
Mayor, I believe this is Elk River Schools.
It, it is? Okay.
East of Martin Farms, that will be the first areas that begin to send students into Saint Michael, Albertville.
Okay. Is that, is a Saint Michael, Albertville, is that open enrollment over there?
Yes.
If I remember right.
Mayor, they used to take quite a number of kids from that area in the Saint Michael via open enrollment. I believe that decreased once ISD seven twenty-eight built Prairie View Elementary and then Prairie View Middle.
Hmm, okay. Thank you.
Any questions or comments, counsel? No further questions or motion?
Motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty, vacating existing public right-of-way and drainage and utility easements, approve the final plaque of Tanglewood Second Edition, subject to the conditions stated at the findings, effect, and decision as presented, and adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one approving a development contract.
Second. Motion by Tina, seconded by Michelle. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Yeah, our next on city council reports and updates. Does anyone have anything? I would remind everybody tomorrow night is Touch a Truck, so Prairie Park will be very busy. That is six to seven thirty. And then next week is the grand opening for Perry Pedrip's park. Friedrich. Friedrich. Pronounce that wrong every time, apologize. But that's from six to seven.
Adam, we have the ribbon cutting tomorrow too, right?
Yes.
Mayor, council, yes, tomorrow, Christian Brothers Automotive is holding a ribbon-cutting ceremony with the Chamber of Commerce.
Good.
Back up briefly, yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, right.
There was no planning commission meeting, but the next meeting is scheduled for Monday, May nineteenth. And there will be three public hearing items. Sunshine Dental, which is outlot A of Waterfront Commons on the east side, Modern Construction, the Otsigo Waterfront District, which is mixed-use near One-on-One Market. And then the Greninger Property Zoning Map Amendment and CUP for subdividing a property into two parcels on the west side of the city.
Thank you. Any other updates? With public safety, the event tomorrow night, public safety is moved to Wednesday. All right, no one else has any other city council reports and updates? We'll move on to staff reports and updates, Adam.
Mayor, council, thank you. You guys did a good job taking half of my items, so. There is a district community partners meeting on Wednesday at the school district offices, if any of you are interested in that. Next council meeting is a Tuesday due to the Memorial Day holidays, so just a friendly reminder on that one, so. Nothing more there.
What is the, the meeting again?
The school district, every two to three months hosts what they call a community partners meeting, invites the communities from the district, nonprofits, school representation, school board members, just talking about things that are happening in within the communities and within the district.
Okay, is that at the district office or?
Most of the time, yes. They can forward you, they invite if you're interested.
Okay.
We would have gotten it a few weeks ago. Would come from Longa.
Correct.
Longa Chamber.
Longa Chamber.
Yep. Um, Adam, in regards to a comment that came up at during open forum regarding the Albertville compo site that we share with them?
Uh, yeah, actually, mayor, council, and meeting with city administrator Napster and their public works department on Wednesday afternoon. It is becoming more of a problem. There is no onsite monitoring in terms of security gates or staff presence there. It is. Um, it is within the city of Albertville. They do offer uh a cost share agreement with the city of Otsego. So typically, it's about a two-third, one-third cost, but with Otsego picking up the bigger portion. So uh, looking at the long-term future of that, uh, we are going to meet and talk about some solutions potentially.
Right, perfect. I would agree with the resident that you do on the weekends when you pull in, you can barely turn around and by the size of some of the material, it's doesn't seem like it's just residents that are dropping items there.
Do we uh still share and taking care of that with them, with Albertville then, like?
Mayor, yes, that's true. Our, our staff is out there almost a daily basis, especially this time of year, pushing piles up, making room for people to turn around hopefully, but um, if you've been by there recently, it has gotten to a point where uh it was necessary to chip it and there was a contractor on site, at least at the end of last week doing that. So I'm not sure if they're finished yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll drop.
Thank you, Mayor. Have no updates.
Okay. Dave?
No updates. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Dan?
Mayor, no further updates.
Okay. Ron?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Just a few uh projects going on Costco, that's ongoing, and an acre second. Right, Boulder Pass fourth, uh, Pride Point fourth. And then now Tanglewood Second will start up in the near future. Um, also an update on the Odine Avenue trunk water main. Uh, talked to the contractor today. Sounds like a startup in July, so another couple of months yet. That's everything.
Thank you. We're in construction season. All right. If no one has anything else, then a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So move.
Okay. Motion by Corey, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Meeting is ended. Thank you all for attending this evening.